Microphone check, one, two.
Welcome to this morning's Benton County Board of Commissioners meeting for September 17th. Just a couple of typical announcements. If you have a cell phone, please silence it at this moment. And if you'd like to address the board during our public comment period, please sign up on the sheet at the back of the room. Or if you're online, please put your name in the chat. And if you are presenting to the board today, the microphones that are on the table in front of us are on when there's a red light at the top. So you have to press the button so the red light is on. They're fairly sensitive. You need to have the microphone fairly close to you in order to make sure that you're heard. And with that, we will move on to introductions. I'm Zan Ojero, Board Chair.
Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Vance Corney, County Council.
And Rachel McInnany, County Administrator.
And we do a round of introductions in the room, so you will be able to see. We just, we do a round of introductions in the room, just so we know who's in the room.
I'm Steve Clark, Corvallis resident and co-chair of the City of Corvallis Community Engagement Task Force.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Julie Manning, also a Corvallis resident, and I'm a co-chair of the Task Force meeting.
Thank you.
Stephanie Miller, Corvallis residence, Executive Director of Corvallis Center Against Making Mist.
Good morning. Chelsea Chickham with the Benton County Sheriff's Office.
Laura Kwiatkowski, Board Commissioner.
Eric Mello, Board Recorder.
Jeff Van Arstal, Benton County Sheriff. Good morning.
Good morning. And is there anyone else joining us online this morning?
Yes, Autumn Carter, Managing Partner for Next Strategies for Benton Permanent and Licensing.
Good morning. This is Petra Sheath, interim Community Development Director.
Thank you. Okay, are there any changes to the agenda this morning? Hearing none, we will consider the agenda approved. And the first item of business is proclamation, and I'll welcome Chelsea up to the table to read it for us.
Are we good to go? All right. Good morning. In the matter of proclaiming September as National Preparedness Month in Benton County, National Preparedness Month occurring annually in September since 9/11 creates an ideal opportunity for community members, businesses, and visitors of Benton County, Oregon, to join other community members across the US in preparing their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, including natural disasters. The US Department of Homeland Security and other federal, state, and local officials and the private sector are working to prevent and respond to all types of emergencies. When individuals take responsibility for preparing their families and their communities, the chances of survival and return to normalcy following a disaster is greatly increased. The United Nations Climate Study and other research indicates that the impact of climate change will lead to significantly more frequent and more severe disasters in the future. The Benton County Sheriff's Office Emergency Management Division partners with federal, state, local, tribal, territorial, private, and volunteer agencies to inform individuals on how to take action through our public preparedness education campaigns and comprehensive planning and coordination efforts. Residents, businesses, and visitors of Benton County, Oregon are urged to plan ahead for disasters and encourage their family and their friends to also do so by participating in neighborhood preparedness activities, registering their contact information in the local emergency notification system called Lynn Benton Alert, and participating in annual readiness events. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Benton County Board of Commissioners that September is National Preparedness Month in Benton County, and all community members, businesses, and visitors are encouraged to develop their own emergency preparedness plans, practice evacuation drills, and join in this observance.
Thank you. How did the preparedness fair go during the chili cook-off?
It was great. It's nice to be congruent to them. We had several hundred folks that attended. We kept track on little clickers, so it was fabulous. It's a good local and state combination of organizations that come together as well as emergency services, so.
That's excellent. Are there any other events coming up in association with this Preparedness Month?
Not in direct association, however, we have been preparing for iron ore, which happens in October since probably the start of summer, so we continue to do that this summer as well. And then we always have our CERT training, so Community Emergency Response Training, and that helps individuals in the community prepare on an individual level and a community level to be more prepared for emergencies and be more resilient to them.
Thank you.
Well, as a longtime volunteer firefighter, I am glad to proclaim September as National Preparedness Month in Benton County. Proclamation number E 2024-019.
Second, all in favor, please signify with an "I". "I". Thank you very much, Chelsea.
Thank you.
Okay, up next is our Steve Clark and Julie Manning. Oh, I'm sorry. I erred.
Just faking you out all morning, Steve.
Oh, no, we're gonna call you right back because it's actually our next presenter. So unless there's someone online that would wish to present. Okay.
There we go. Good morning. As I said earlier, my name is Steve Clark, while now retired from the university. Appeared before you today as a member of the Corvallis and the Benton County community. I'm joined today by former Corvallis Mayor Julie Manning, along with former Council President Penny York, who cannot be with us today. Julie and I and Penny co-chair the City of Corvallis Community Engagement Task Course. The Task Course was appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council last spring to do some very important work to gather community input on community values and goals and outcomes as they relate to downtown Corvallis and the concept to improve the city's downtown civic campus along Madison Avenue between Fourth and Fifth Streets. Concepts such as retaining and improving the current city hall or removing that structure and building a new civic campus in that location. The Task Course was also charged, the city council, to inform the community broadly about the goals of the council to evaluate city facilities in general, then specific the city hall, and to engage the community in discussion about these concepts. You may be aware that several years ago, the city council undertook a third-party evaluation of numerous public facilities, city hall, fire stations throughout the city, the law enforcement building, the parks administration building, and maintenance facilities in Avery Park. As I said, the Community Engagement Task Course was formed by the council and the mayor to be advisory. We have no real vote. We take action, but it is simply advisory. It's work to gather a broad set of community input and assess that input is coming to a close right now. We began our work last spring, and we've undertaken numerous efforts to engage the community. Since last spring, we not only held our own community meetings, public meetings, held to promote the activity and conduct the activity of the Task Course, but we've conducted an online quantitative survey, which more than 960 people participated in. Not only did they fill out quantitative information, but more than 370 took the time to provide qualitative input on a variety of topics, not just city hall. And it was really illuminating to hear what, you know, more than three, more than 30% of those who participated, what their insights were, what their concerns were, and what the recommendations were. We also held more than 15 outreach meetings, engagement sessions, and if you will, listing posts. And while our data gathering has concluded at the end of the month, a meeting like today is a form of community engagement. It's a form of listening, and be assured that Julie and I will report back to the Task Course in full what we've heard from you today. A few observations about what we learned that anecdotally and quantitatively, qualitatively, I think will, you'll take interest in. The first is that a significant percentage, I'd say, you know, more than 30 to 40% have strong confusion over what is city hall and what is the county courthouse. A significant number believe the county courthouse is city hall. So as a, as a community, we have some orientation work to do. We also found what, what the public is interested in, and I was impressed as we walk into this building, first thing you are greeted by is a service center. And that's what community members want in a city hall, whether it's the present city hall enlarged and refurbished or a new facility. They want transparency and greater transparency. They want improved access in this case, city hall, and accessibility, not only into the building, but throughout the building. And that was true of both community members and employees of the city that we interviewed. Many community members, and when I say many, as an attorney once told me, significant is more than 25%. I don't know if Vance agrees with that, but believe that the city hall should remain in downtown. Many support law enforcement services and recognize the limitation of the current jail and law enforcement center. And they recognize the limitations of that law enforcement center as a, as a functional facility for sheriffs, deputies, administrators, and city police officers and administrators. And they associate downtown with parking issues. No surprise. They also associate downtown with public safety issues, including homelessness and some element of drug issues in the community. Many, many share a significant interest in the taxes and fees that local government assess. And, and they understand that when you're paying, for example, a water bill, you're actually in part in a form of taxation. We have gathered much more input, values, sense of outcomes, and recommendations from the community, and will begin to assess those findings and prioritize what we learn and provide them in full to the city council and in our final report, which we'll share with you to the county commission. Meeting again tonight, and over the next several weeks, we're going to assess our findings, prioritize those from our learned experience with the community, and draft a set of recommendations for the city council and the mayor and present those on October 21st. And as part of our strategy, we'll carry out after that an informational activity for the entire community. We think it's important, certainly in today's era of less traditional information sources, that we conclude our work by reporting back and letting the public know. We have, as I said, appreciate the opportunity to update you in the future. And as I said, while our process for quantitative gathering has concluded, we would love to hear your questions today, and Julie and I will do our best to respond to those and take note of observations that you might share with us today about the concept of Corvallis's city hall, whether current and improved and expanded or removed and a new city hall or retained and possibly moved somewhere else in a new city hall. So our ears are wide open for your input.
And we might just mention, as we reference the city, the civic campus, that although much of the discussion has centered around the city hall facility, we're also talking about the annex directly west of city hall, as well as the municipal court building and the Madison Avenue meeting building, which also houses a number of city staff and services. So that's, that's sort of multi-building area has been sort of the focus of our engagement efforts.
Questions?
Yeah, I appreciate the survey. Anytime we can get the information, what our community is thinking. And I appreciate the comment about the confusion. Well, I thought that courthouse was city hall. Not, I would guess, not that many members of the community actually visit city hall. I think there's some reference to that.
Yes, Commissioner, I was just gonna say that was one of the, one of the questions that we asked. Yes, you're right.
And there's the perpetual confusing what the county does and what the city does, and where is that invisible line between the two jurisdictions? So, and any, any information that you develop on the comments about correctional facility will, I hope you can pass those along in some detail, because that's still on our radar. So, I guess, other than that, just I appreciate informing us what you're up to and what the information that you're getting back and how you're planning to use that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will you or the city be sharing all of the results of the survey?
Yes, the, the summary of, of the online survey and all of the comments are currently on the city's website, as well as notes that we've taken in, from a series of in-person meetings that we've held during the summer months as well. So there's quite a bit there available now.
Okay, would you mind sending us the link? Because I did a quick search on their website and didn't immediately find it, so. You might find it quicker than I.
Happy to do so.
Thank you. Another comment slash question. So when I took the survey, I didn't see an option or a question that asked if a respondent thought that updating the civic campus was a priority or not? Or like, what, you know, what level of priority? Are there other priorities that would rise above this? Do you guys have a sense for that, where there was information in the comments that was telling?
Yes, actually, a number of, of the open-ended questions, the last question on the survey was an open-ended, you know, please share. And that, that was one of the more frequent comments that people made, that they tried to provide some additional context for how high of a priority they felt this particular project would be in their minds and why. So I think that will provide some really helpful feedback for the council. The reason that this particular project, the council was interested in receiving additional community feedback is that in a facilities assessment of city-owned buildings that was conducted in 2021, the city hall building was one of the higher-rated priority buildings that needed addressing from the, from the, the folks who conducted the facilities assessments. Fortunately, some of the other higher priority needs were some of our fire stations, where, as you've noticed, the city has been able to receive grants and other funding that have facilitated upgrades and improvements to several of the fire stations. So this city hall and related areas, one of the ones that the council is trying to determine how to, how or if to best move forward.
Commissioner, in addition to the quantitative results, we've, we've tried to use technology to assess, not, not manage, public input. And what we find initially is that there is a strong interest in improving downtown. And within downtown, having the city hall or city administration facilities remain, yet there are interests in having progress in downtown prioritize issues that include parking, city infrastructure, public infrastructure, safety, housing. And, and some would say you must address these before a priority such as a municipal structure. There are people who have prioritized in their mind that any improvement should provide for a reflection of history. Now, does that mean you retain the current building or have features of it retained? Do you utilize materials that are recognized within Corvallis, Benton County, alignment valley as, as traditional or as, as relevant historically? There's a lot of ways to address that. But community members who took the time to respond do have priorities, and this is but one.
Thank you.
We certainly appreciate your time today, and we will provide that link as we leave to staff and, and offer an opportunity to share the final report with you. And if you have questions, would like to discuss it, would welcome the opportunity to come back. Hearing Commissioner Malone, maybe there'd be an opportunity for some time for, and I presume you've done in the past joint sessions of the council and the commission, simply to share with the public more about what you do individually and collectively. And I think the communities of Benton County don't see government as individual. They see it as, as a public service entity, one, one, all for one and one for all. So thank you.
Actually, I just have one question. Your survey, the, first of all, how was it distributed for folks to participate? And were you pleased with the responses or the amount of responses? What was the methodology in, or ways to talk?
Online survey that was promoted in a variety of ways, at the community meetings, at farmers market, at the, at the public engagement sessions. I believe more than once in water bills, online promotion, social media promotion. We sought to engage the media, and it was interesting that how many people did find it and, and, and joined in it. So a variety of methodologies to promote and then to enable people to participate was through the online survey. As Julie said, it existed within the city website under city facilities. And, and then the Task Course had its, under community advisory boards, there was reference there.
I would just note, to your point, Rachel, it was a self-selected sample. It was not a random sample distribution methodology. And so we certainly recognized that in discussing how to distribute and realizing sort of the pros and cons of different outreach strategies. We did provide a Spanish version of the survey and also printed copies of the survey in both English and Spanish. The, in terms of the overall response, at 961, Patrick Rollins, the Public Information Officer at the city, indicated that based on other surveys that the city has conducted, this was the highest or one of the highest response rates that's been received. So it did seem to be an area of interest for a number of individuals.
Given the self-selected nature of the respondents, did you find that there was a sense of strong support and, or strong opposition voiced primarily in the responses?
There are trends that we're in the process of attempting to assimilate as, as, as we meet. So if you wouldn't mind, stay tuned, and we'll provide that back shortly, a month. One additional note is the Task Course was quite a diverse representation. We had an LB student who also, a former LB student who also attends Oregon State. Diverse representation of community members. The outreach was also diverse. We reached out to the Associated Students Oregon State University Leadership Group, and forget, approximately 25 attended. We went to Crescent Valley High School, to Lynn Benton Community College, to Corvallis High School, Leadership Corvallis, the downtown, the New Downtown Advisory Committee, Vinomosus, Farmers Market.
City employee.
City employees had two meetings. We did some walking tours of downtown ourselves and then invited members of Leadership Corvallis to do that. We sought to engage as many diverse members of, in this case, the Corvallis city community as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I look forward to. Well, I look forward to hearing those final results and and then thinking about what comes next. There's no doubt that the city needs facilities. It's all about what and how and the money.
And when.
Those minor details.
Yep.
We appreciate all of your questions and your time today. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it as well. Okay, next up is Stephanie Miller, the Executive Director for Center against rape and domestic violence, for a program update. Oh, it was on.
Hi, thank you so much, commissioners, for allowing me the time to talk about CARDVA or services and how we have impacted our community. So I appreciate your time. Again, as stated before, I'm Stephanie Miller. I'm the CARDVA Executive Director. Okay, we have been, we were founded in 1981, so we've been around for about 43 years. Our mission primarily, it's written up there, but it's primarily to serve the population of survivors, victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, sex trafficking, and stalking. And all of our services are provided by trained confidential advocates, meaning that they are not mandated reporters. It is designed to to further engage with survivors so that they can share their stories a bit more, so that we can help them navigate through their trauma and really allocate whatever resources we have to get them into safe housing and safety. Okay, we have what's unique about CARDVA is that we are the only sexual assault domestic violence provider that offers 24/7 crisis hotline. And what's further unique and special about that is that we can receive a call at 2:00 AM and we will have advocates who will meet client survivors in the community in safe locations, whether it be parking lot of Safeway. Because oftentimes, there are times when individuals call and say, this is the only time I have to flee. And so we will answer that call and be in the community and meet folks where they're at. So that's one of the unique things. The other unique thing is that we are fortunately, unfortunately, the only provider of safe confidential shelter in Lynn and Benton Counties combined. And we're talking, I think, a combined population of over 224,000. To have our shelters, we have two confidential shelters. There are homes that have been renovated to be safe shelters with a total of seven bedrooms. That is all. We do supplement this with providing motel stays. We provide legal advocacy, which basically means that we are helping individuals fill out that LYNFEE protective orders. They're about like over 20 pages. So so we have somebody stationed at the Lynn County Courthouse five days a week to support individuals trying to fill those protective orders out. We provide financial assistance, and it's primarily the financial assistance to lower the barriers to safe housing. That can be security deposits, first month's rent. It could be car repairs. It can even be relocation costs such as bus tickets, airline tickets, to get them to a safe location. It can also be tuition, because to get into safe housing, permanent housing, you need income. So whatever we can provide to secure safe housing for the individual and their dependents. We have sexual response coordination with Sarah's place, and we respond to law enforcement calls as well. We also have support groups, sexual assault and domestic violence support groups, as well as outreach and education. We provide education to middle schools and high schools and really any, to colleges and any organizations to talk about DV, to talk about safe, healthy relationships. Services, this is from last fiscal year, we provided over 7,800 services. Most of it was through our hotline. Individuals who call to tell their stories, they want that validation, they want somebody to listen to them. Through that, that is our doorway, gateway to our other services, such as the legal advocacy. The personal assistance, basic needs in that number is the shelter provision and the motel stays. We do accompany individuals to court hearings and medical appointments. Counties served, or this is as reported by participants, survivors, victims. The large chunk of it is Lynn County and Benton Counties. It's no surprise. We also have had calls and provided shelter for individuals calling from out of state, or neighboring states of California and Washington State. So that's the other category. And again, this is based on numbers as reported. So it's not high because not everybody shares what county they're from. Victimization, 80% domestic violence, 8% sexual assault, 10% stalking. The 2% other category is primarily sex trafficking victims. Last year, we provided shelter, just shelter, I'm not talking about motel stays, to 125 individuals. Forty percent of them were children under the age of 18 between, well, from infancy on up to 18. We do provide shelter for minors as well. And we provided shelter for two survivors under the age of 14 last year. This is our budget from last year. You can see it's 1.85 million. I apologize, the numbers are inaccurate. I want to correct that. The the 3% is really 4%. So if you did the math, it's all 100%. But 69% of revenue stream is from government, most state and federal and some local. And then 18% of the other category really should be, oh, 18% is individual, foundation 9%. And the 4% is basically interest from our investments and some sales of some books that we sell that one of our advocates, Mary Zelenka, who's been around 34 years, wrote. Okay, expenses, 1.8 million. And this is where the numbers are not right. 62% is salaries and benefits. I did not extrapolate the provider, the advocate salary. It's just all clumped together. 62% is salaries and benefits. The orange is not 8%. It is 22%. And that is direct financial assistance to clients as well as services and the cost of our shelters. The 8% is admin. It cut off the my little QR code. I just want to highlight that we do have our annual Safe Family Breakfast, October 1st. We do it October, the first Tuesday in October because October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And so we are asking for sponsorships. We also have a link to RSVP registration. It's on our website as well, but I did provide a QR code on the paper handouts that I brought as well. And then I wanted to show you, I'm really excited about about this. We do, we have a CARDVA website refresh. It's going to be launched at the end of this month. And so I wanted you all, you're the first to see sneak peek of the face page. So that's something that's going to be exciting. It's more user-friendly and especially for anybody interested in information about CARDVA and receiving services. Oh, any questions? I think that's it.
Will the website be available in English and Spanish?
Yes, and in other languages as well. Yeah.
And what do you know what proportion of your population is native English speaking versus other languages?
Ah, you know, our our population reflects the population of Corvallis and Albany. I can't give you the exact percentages, but mostly white, Hispanic second.
Okay, do you, given the federal funding, do you have to report on demographic data?
Yes, we do. Yes, yes, we do. Yeah.
And how how stable is the funding? Or is it a challenge right now in this environment?
Thank you for asking. You probably have heard the VOKA funding and something that we have our eye on because it's been reported for the last couple of years, actually, that there's going to be this pending 40% to 44% reduction at the federal level. And of course, it all trickles down. We receive roughly about of the 60, I think I said 62%, 68% of our government funding, of that, I'd say about 60% of that is VOKA. So it's, we are keeping our eye on that, and it's pretty significant.
So I'm assuming you're working fairly closely with our congressional delegation on those issues?
Yes.
I know that you're not alone because there are other organizations all across the country in the same spot. Go ahead.
Would you translate VOKA?
Oh, victim, it's it's funding for victims of of crime victims. Yeah.
And that's a federal program?
Yes, it is.
It also runs our crime victims program at the District Attorney's Office.
Okay, I'm curious, your organization has a kind of a geographic niche. Are there partner organizations, especially in the Willamette Valley that you?
Oh, we partner with many organizations. CSC, the Samaritan, Smith and Health for our medical for victims of sexual assault. We partner, actually, I didn't mention this, and I want to make sure if Sheriff Van Arsdale is still on. We have closely worked with law enforcement on Benton County, Corvallis, and Sheriff Van Arsdale will also be speaking at our event.
He just popped on.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff.
And I think Commissioner Malone, you were asking whether there are similar organizations to CARDVA in other parts of Oregon?
Other parts of Oregon, you said, we were talking. So so we also provide a lot of services to the Lincoln County community as well. But when I talk about safe housing, we partner with a lot of the other safe shelters, primarily Marion, Portland, Salem area, and Bend, especially if we find out that sometimes we exclude people from our shelter based on safety. And so we really try to link individuals who need safe shelter to other shelters. And so we do provide, we do have a collaboration with other shelters in the state.
So so there are comparable organizations to CARDVA?
Yes, and others, yeah. A lot of the, many of them is in Portland, some in Bend.
Okay. Other question, I'm curious on the trends, domestic violence, sexual assault, making any progress or?
So this is, yeah, you know, we, I mentioned that we have an outreach and education department. And we're really focused on not only outreach into the rural community of east of five, but also awareness that it's not just women, self-identified women that we serve. We serve self-identified men and transgender individuals. In fact, last fiscal year, we provided shelter for two self-identified male victims, one of whom had two children with them that we sheltered.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Weiss?
I just wanted to thank you for the work that you and your organization does. And you know, it's tragic that we have a need for this, but as long as there is a need, it's amazing that you guys are there. So thank you.
I just want to also conclude by saying that I really want to thank our partners and our community for their patience. Because as you know, in nonprofit work, especially in this field, you know, we are constantly trying to find and recruit good, talented advocates. And sometimes we are on a skeleton cruise. So thank you all.
Are you guys, do you have any openings now? Are you hiring now?
Yes, we do. We have openings for four advocates, as well as the Outreach and Education Department. Yeah.
Good to know.
Thank you.
And I know that you recently presented to the Benton, the Lynn County Commissioners as well, are, what are, what are other organizations doing to help support your work?
So when I presented to Lynn County, also, which thank you for the reminder, we did at the beginning of the calendar year 2023, purchase another building, a home in Lynn County. It has been, we're in the process of, we're just finishing up renovating it and putting a fence around it, support from Albany, CDBG funds. And we are actually trying to raise funding to staff the location. And that location, hopefully, is either going to be an extended shelter, so very different from our current shelters, which is a 30-day stay, to an extended shelter up to two years. So for for individuals needing longer-term stays. And in terms of our collaboration, that is also something that I want to to really request that community members in Lynn and Benton Counties contact me if they know of any organizations that we can provide awareness to, because we do want to extend our reach, not just only to Lynn and to Albany and Corvallis, but to the rural communities.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we are grateful to learn a little bit more about the organization. And perhaps we can be of support and we're happy to promote your event and make sure that you are well-funded to support all these victims of domestic violence.
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, moving on. Next up, we have a report on the Enterprise Permitting Systems Project from Rick Crager and Autumn Carter online. And I'm not sure whether Shannon or Reed are joining us.
Reed is unable to attend. And Shannon, and I believe Shannon is online.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come today to give you a progress report on our permitting, e-permitting system. I do, as already alluded to, Autumn Carter, who is our consultant from Next Strategies, is joining us and she will be doing the bulk of this presentation. So I'll introduce her here shortly. And then I also want to just recognize Shannon Bush, who I know is also online, has served as a project manager in this role and has just done a great job of keeping this moving along. So I'll start by just kind of giving a little bit of background and a reminder to the Board of Commissioners that during the 2023-25 budget, there was a initiative that came forward for the idea of creating a, what called at the time, an enterprise system, a more robust permitting system that encompassed all of the work that we did across the county. I think, as you might recall, there was a lot of discussion related to that proposal as opposed to maybe jumping into a system that maybe we, a little bit more intentional in taking the time to look at a collaborative approach and really spend, take the opportunity to really listen to other departments and discover where there is this opportunity for an enterprise system and really what do we mean by enterprise system. So with that, the Board of Commissioners approved in the budget $100,000 to invest in this to really focus, again, initially in the early discovery, the collaborative process. And this was a part of your initiative for us to bring a group together. You obviously got a little bit of a slow start with some of the transitions that was happening with our county administrator initially in the biennium, but we were able to kick that off once Rachel was able to get in place. And she's been extremely supportive of helping us move that work forward. So we then successfully got a contract, a consultant in place, Next Strategies, who's here today, and they have been outstanding. I do want to just really take a moment to say how incredibly great they have been to work with. And they really have helped us set the table to have a theme of collaboration, which is what we all wanted and brought a variety of different departments together to really determine, you know, what do we mean by enterprise it and what do we mean as a one-stop shop? And I think I would say all members that participated, all department heads, really felt empowered in this process, really felt heard, really had a chance to understand things that, you know, were there connections, were there not connections, were there lots of opportunities? And I think for myself, just speaking personally, I think of just a lot of aha moments of, wow, boy, I didn't know we didn't have that. We could maybe really make this process a lot better by just perhaps simple documentation or communication. So I think there's a lot of learning moments and I know, again, Autumn will cover that. But I guess what I would leave you with is, as Autumn starts to kind of give you an overview of the process, is that where we really landed is, you know, what does it mean by a one-stop shop? And that's, you know, the keywords for us is clear, connected, and consistent. And again, that doesn't necessarily mean it's one system. You can accomplish those things in multiple ways, but that was really the theme of the work that came out of this. And again, just a, you know, a great process that now has left a roadmap for us to take the next step. I should also say, from a budgetary standpoint, while you appropriated $100,000 for us, we spent half of that. And so now we have the opportunity to really determine how we're going to take these recommendations and make some progress between now and the end of the biennium. So with that, I will turn this over to Autumn, who will take you through the PowerPoint. And again, just seeing her praise probably over and over, just really appreciate all the hard work she's done and really helped us along. So with that, Autumn will shift it to you.
Thank you so much, Rick. It's been a pleasure working with you and your team. And I want to thank the Commissioners and the members of the public in Benton County for having me here today. As I noted earlier, my partner, Reed Wagner, is, was not able to join, but I'll be presenting on both of our behalfs and on behalf of the work group that we brought together as part of this effort. So just a bit, again, about myself, my name is Autumn Carter. I'm managing partner of Next Strategies, and we're an organizational development and community solutions firm that's been working with Benton County around its efforts to define an approach to one-stop permitting and licensing that's feasible to implement. So as part of this effort, as Rick mentioned, this summer, we worked with your directors and your staff who are involved in the process, the permitting and licensing process from across the organization. And so today, I'm going to provide a brief overview of the work we've undertaken, including a breakdown of that three-stage, the three-phase approach that we're going to, that are proposed by the staff, the directors, and among that work group. So our goal with this proposal is simple, as Rick mentioned. We want to create a system that's clear, connected, and consistent. The phased approach I'll outline focuses on making some immediate improvements and preparing the organization to implement a more unified experience over time. It's focused on making permitting and licensing more user-friendly for residents, businesses, and staff, while also improving efficiency and communication across departments. So let's start with a quick overview of what we'll cover today. We'll begin with a problem statement that synthesizes what we kind of defined as what we're trying to achieve here, but we'll also walk through what we heard from stakeholders and provide an overview of the overall approach, as well as a need analysis of our findings. Then I'll walk you through the actual three-stage proposal, three-phase proposal that we developed with the work group to address the county's challenges and improve service delivery. At the end, I'll conclude with a discussion on a proposed timeline that we believe is feasible, including some key elements of each stage, and we'll save some time at the end for questions. So Benton County's permitting and licensing system is fragmented, resulting in inconsistent customer experiences, inefficient processes, and confusion. Customers and staff lack ready access to critical information, while siloed internal processes and knowledge result in slow approvals and increased workloads. So this is, this kind of encapsulates what we found and really formed the core of how we understand this problem. To take a step back, I'll walk you through a bit of what Rick just shared, but give you a bit of details about what we set out to achieve as part of the project. Our team's roles as consultants was to facilitate the development of an enterprise strategy to streamline the county's permitting and licensing processes. We focused on building shared understanding of the current process to identify ways to improve collaboration across departments and make the system more transparent and easier to navigate for both the public and internal staff. And Rick alluded to this. We saw this project as an opportunity, and this was our guidance as consultants, to really model what's allowed in the collaboration that was envisioned for the county as a whole. So we saw this process, this process and this project as a microcosm of that broader effort. As part of our deliverables, the core elements were an assessment of the current state of the organization, including strengths, gaps, and opportunities. We wanted to articulate a defined, one-stop approach that reflected broad agreement across departments and provide an assessment of potential impact of the proposed approach. We've drafted a report that reflects, that reflects these components in greater details, breaks down the components, but you'll see a bit of background on each of them in this presentation. So how did we actually get here? What was our methodology? The proposal itself wasn't developed in isolation. Neither we as consultants nor any one person or team developed it alone. It came from analysis, feedback, and deliberation by critical stakeholders, including your staff, your directors, your customers. That looked like 15 interviews with directors and staff. We conducted a SWOT analysis and we held multiple work sessions. So we started by identifying those key challenges and that's what we incorporated into the SWOT. We used a combination of interviews and work sessions that we, during which we gathered input on what's working and where there's room for improvement. And we also interviewed recent customers to capture their experiences and deepen our own understanding of the organization's need. That also helped to validate the approach as we were developing and refining it. So overall, this collaborative approach allowed us to develop a comprehensive, though flexible, solution that reflects the needs of both staff and the community. It also allows for buy-in from those who are most affected by changes along the way. So I'm going to walk through a breakdown of some of what we heard based on internal perspectives. This is where we, this is how we understood how the processes, how processes today actually work and how we identified gaps. So we, overall, we found that many challenges are shared across departments, and then they fall within four distinct but intersecting categories. They are people, process, information, and technology. Each represents a critical aspect of the county's operations, and the effectiveness of the overall approach depends on how well those areas support and interact with one another. So while staff are highly skilled and dedicated, their knowledge is often siloed, leading to inefficiencies, including some dependencies that we saw on key individuals. A bright spot in the people, in the people pillar, was that site consultations helped to clarify both, helped to clarify processes across departments for both staff and customers. And that happened because in site consultations, folks from across the organization are brought into the same room, and then they work through what the process is and they set expectations for customers. That was a bright spot that we worked to incorporate into the proposal as a learning. We found that processes throughout the organization vary significantly from department, from one department to another. That creates bottlenecks, especially when permits or licenses require cross-department collaboration. There's also a distinct relationship-driven component to the processes, which can prevent, present both benefits and trade-offs. So if you know your colleagues very well, you know you have familiar working relationships, it's easy to nav, it's easier to navigate handoffs, there's trust there. And if you don't know where to start, if you're newer to the organization, it can be really hard to understand how to navigate those relationships. The same thing translated for customers. When they had a close-in relationship with a member of the team or a team as a whole, they felt really comfortable with the system and felt like they could get their questions answered. If they were relatively new to the system or had that complexity and didn't know who to talk to, it was harder to navigate. And information, we found that information and documentation are scattered, often, it's fragmented, inconsistent, and stored in different formats. This presents an accessibility challenge on multiple levels, because making critical information, it makes critical information both difficult to obtain and to understand. And when we look at technology, we found that current technology is similarly fragmented, with the overall permitting and licensing process lacking, relying on many systems across departments. But they often lacked integration, meaning they're unable to connect to one another and share information easily across the two or more. So you can see that this lack of standardization not only slows down processes, but also makes it difficult for staff to provide consistent support to customers. The shared challenges inform the foundation of our solution. I wanted to note that the website, so the website is one key portal we're engaging with information from many users, not all, but many. It actually reflects a number of these challenges, as an example. It reflects some of the broader fragmentation and inconsistency across people, process, information, and technology, because they're all tied. So information relating to permitting and licensing is actually spread across multiple pages that are organized by departments, rather than having one cohesive, single approach. And then within each of those kind of areas, there's also varying levels of detail and guidance, so that reflects an inconsistency. So if you're familiar, know exactly where to go, it may not be so daunting. But if you're trying to understand where to start, and you're starting on the webpage and you're trying to just figure it out, especially in the kind of early research periods, it can lead to some paralysis and confusion. So I'm going to walk through a bit of the, we heard when connecting with customers. We were fortunate to speak with several who've navigated the permitting and licensing process to some extent in recent months and years, sometimes once, sometimes multiple times. Each column that you see, left to right, reflects statements we heard from a single respondent. So if you look vertically, that's all in one person. And their position on the slide from left to right represents the approximate level of satisfaction they expressed, with one on the left being very dissatisfied and five being very satisfied on the right. So we heard that the, they were very, so on the very dissatisfied section of the slide to the left, we heard that the system was quote-unquote convoluted, arbitrary, didn't get a straight answer, didn't provide a straight answer, didn't get a straight answer, that there were internal communications breakdowns. Next, that their client will not have their building on time, that there was a delay in permitting, it's extremely disappointing, and that they have no time to waste. In the middle, as we get to neutral, the user found that the experience was extremely slow, or it was clear and straightforward. So two different experiences from that same person who navigates the system multiple times. They would, quote, prefer an online status updates, and it's a pain to get through the first steps. And they found that there were, that it's, quote, "not specific" when there are rejections. We get more into the satisfied territory, we heard someone satisfied, quote, "it's pretty standard, no one's perfect, could be faster," and that the county is known as being strict, but that they explained why. And then finally, in the very satisfied category, so this user found, quote, "the process was pretty good, pretty easy, that their request took a few days. All I had to do was call," and they explained the process, and that because, in general, this was not about Benton specifically, but in general, because emails tend to get lost, I'd rather talk to someone first. So the sample size here was small and the list was not random. The list that we pulled from and requested interviews from was not random, so our findings aren't scientific and we don't support them to be. However, we generally found that at least one of three factors tended to lead to higher satisfaction with the current approach. It was either that there's familiarity, speed, or a lack of complexity. And so for simple, straightforward permits or licenses requests that only required one department, customers tended to have fairly positive experience. But as soon as requests involved multiple departments or complex approvals, the process became frustrating, leading to longer wait times and multiple rounds of back and forth. So throughout the process, throughout the project, four core needs emerged, which inform our proposed solution. First, there's the unified customer experience. The county needs a system that is customer and staff experience. The county needs a system that's clear, fast, and consistent for customers with one place for them to start. Second, internal collaboration and efficiency. Departments need to be able to work better together. Streamline processes and improved coordination are key. Third, data and integration and accessibility. Right now, information is fragmented to work more smoothly. The county needs a connected system where data flows seamlessly across departments, or at least has the appearance to do so. Finally, technology and process readiness. The county should be able to ensure, should be able to ensure that both technology and staff processes are scalable, adaptable, and ready for future growth, and that can help mitigate risks around ongoing needs and maintenance. So in response to these needs, the work group focused on exploring what it would take to deliver a more unified experience, one that was clear, connected, and consistent for both customers and staff. The following statement is from the work group and it outlines that vision. Quote, "We aim to enhance the experience of interacting with the county for permitting and licensing, whether in-person, online, or by phone. We will build trust by helping applicants navigate the process, reducing internal silos, and creating a seamless experience across departments. Our base approach addresses operational gaps today while laying the foundation for a more integrated and scalable system in the future." So if we take a step back, the diagram on the right represents the interconnected steps of the approval process, from data gathering and intake, all the way to taxes assessed and fees paid. All of the departments and the systems involved are part of a larger ecosystem, and for this to work efficiently, clarity, connectedness, and consistency are key. The unified approach will streamline everything from application intake to final recording, making sure each of those processes, each of those components of the process works smoothly. And the graphic also reflects the departments we worked with as part of this work group. So on the right side, you see that Community Development, Environmental Health, NATE, Public Works, Records and Elections, Assessment. They tend to have more of a focus on the data gathering, review, approvals and issuance and, and then ultimately, when you get to assessment, more of the finalization and reporting. And then on the left-hand side, it's where we find that more of the process is centered around assessment, records, and election, and IT. That's where, again, we have the finalization and recording, the updates to the tax rolls, taxes being assessed and fees paid, so assessed accurately and fees paid on time in time limits. And then it kind of goes back into a data gathering. And then it kind of goes back into a data gathering and take. So when we talk about clarity, this is about making sure guidance is easy to follow at every one of these stages. The idea is to eliminate confusion for both staff and customers by ensuring everyone knows what's required and how to comply. When we say connectedness, the goal is to build a system where departments and processes are seamlessly connected. This means we have better collaboration internally and more cohesive experience for customers as they move throughout the global process. And in terms of consistency, we want the same high standards applied across the board, whether that's in how data is handled or how customers experience the process or how fees are assessed and determined. Consistency builds trust and it ensures predictable, reliable outcomes every time. So I'm going to take a high-level overview of the roadmap as we propose it. It's structured in three phases with each building on the progress made in the prior one. And it allows for flexibility in its implementation. Phase one focuses on stronger collaboration, getting the departments aligned internally through cross-training, knowledge sharing, standardization and process documentation. Rick mentioned some of these as some immediate simpler steps that the county could start undertaking immediately. Phase two moves towards is more of an interim stage and it moves towards a unified user experience, improving the front-end experience for customers, consolidating information online and establishing more consistent intake processes. It also is able to build on phase one because it takes some of the consistency, some of the processes and has that reflected and communicated externally, improving the experience. But phase three, finally, is the launch of an integrated system where customers can apply for permits and licenses. They can pay fees and track their process progress online, including having staff and users have real-time access to updates and historical information as well as G I S linked data. These phases are designed to overlap. So while improving internal collaboration, so while we're improving internal collaboration in the base one, there's opportunities to simultaneously enhance the user experience. They're also designed to be flexible, allowing for concurrent work and adaptability based on available resources, technology preferences, timelines, but also learnings that are occurring along the web. Together, they allow the county to address immediate needs while progressively moving toward a more integrated and efficient system. It also allows the organization to control costs and avoid wasting resources, including time, money and energy. By strengthening existing systems and processes before attempting to introduce new components that are often costly or require earlier sign-ups, which then also costs cost resources while they can't be used. So as we near the end here, I want to break down a proposed timeline that allows for implementation on a two-year approximately two-year roadmap, but with the assumption that this would continue, especially with maintenance and improvements of the system. We designed this version to span across multiple fiscal years as well, which would ensure that planning for anticipated resources and budgets can align with implementation needs. It's pretty high levels and overview, but again, the report breaks down and the report breaks down more of the components with greater specificity. So I'm going to use the existing timelines. We have it outlined here, but the dates again are up to you as decision makers. Phase one could run from October twenty-five, twenty twenty-four through approximately June twenty twenty-five, focusing on standardizing processes and cross-training staff. Some key elements would include providing liaison training to equip staff with the skills to manage front desk tasks and navigate complex inquiries, establishing performance standards for processing time and accuracy, providing internal software training to expand the use of existing tools required for project management and workflow tracking and standardizing high-level processes across the departments. This can improve, this can include elements like refining how fees are established across the organizations as an example. Phase one lays the groundwork for consistency and collaboration, establishing the standards and processes that phase two would build upon as an interim phase. Phase two could begin as early as twenty twenty, early twenty twenty-five and could focus on improving customer facing, the customer-facing side of the process, both in-person and online. So again, that could include updating the website to consolidate information into a single user-friendly page, enhancing customer support by providing accessible in-person and phone support for through trained liaisons or navigators, preparing required data by inventorying, inventorying, digitizing records and standardizing formats for future integration and conducting a technology assessment to evaluate the need for in-house development versus external solutions, including the potential to consolidate existing systems. Phase two is focused on stabilizing the data and systems required for the integrated system rollout that we'd anticipated in phase three. And so phase three, that could be begin as early as mid twenty twenty-five with the rollout being developed as an integrated system continuing through twenty twenty-six in this timeline. The space would focus on delivering a fully online platform capable of online application submissions, renewals, payments and real-time status updates. Customers would still have access to staff support via in-person and on and via phone and as well as online options, but the online platform would offer largely sub-guided option that does not exist today. And it also isn't feasible until processes are strengthened and data is prepared as prerequisites. Some key elements of phase three include, again, allowing online applications to payments, thereby allowing all processes to be completed digitally, leveraging data integration, including connecting historical records and G I S data for easy access and providing a seamless experience to minimize the need for manual staff intervention while providing support when needed. Phase three capitalizes again on process improvement and data preparation undertaken in phases one and two to deliver that seamless and efficient experience. To conclude, the proposed plan would allow Benton County to implement a clear, connected and consistent permitting and licensing system. We designed this approach to be phased and flexible, ensuring the county can improve today while laying the foundation for tomorrow. Thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Rick, do you have a couple of comments?
Yeah, just a quick couple of comments, Commissioner. So first of all, there's a lot, I know. And I guess it's accumulation of a lot of work that was put in over the summertime and a lot of appreciation for the work of everybody. I think, you know, the this last piece in terms of the what we really wanted to come out was a project plan on this because you might remember where we started was let's just invest in the system. Let's just go ahead and, you know, put whatever the amount was, a pretty large amount into a system. And I think my experience is that's what oftentimes will we fail. We think we can solve everything by technology. We just get a system and all we do is create one more layer. And if there's anything to take away from this in terms of the stronger collaboration, and I think all three of you are very familiar with some of the conversations we've had here in recent days where there's been a disconnect between over the years of two different departments. And again, no shame or blame to anyone, but there wasn't the knowledge and collaboration. And what did we end up with? A lot of frustration, a lot of, you know, non-intent. And so I think you're all three very aware of that. And this is, you know, what we can work on now. How do we improve those collaborations? So I think, you know, for the rest of mine, I'm really focusing on that phase one component that Autumn said. Maybe the future does bring us a larger system, but let's let's make sure, as I always say, we can crawl before we, you know, crawl before we walk and be able to be able to take some incremental steps into those phases. So I think that's the best foot forward. And again, just want to thank for, thank everybody for all the work.
Oh, not sure where to start, but it I appreciate getting the third-party look at where we are currently. And I think it's, I don't know all the history, but I don't think our current system was designed. It, it, the best case, you could say it evolved or it happened. And this is, this is where we're at and we hear about our customers, clients mean unhappy with the slowness of the process or kind of inconsistencies, but also the staff isn't being efficient because of the system. And I think that's an important takeaway that we're not getting best production out of, out of our staff because of the system that we're dealing with. I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'd love to go back to page thirty-nine, the circle. Can we bring that up? It's not critical, but I just there's been mentioned that one. And that's not what we have currently. And I think that's a great goal and I hope that the two-year timeline is appropriate and end up with something that works for both staff and our clients. That's should be the goal and went back to making our staff more efficient. I mean, I'm sure they would love that instead of, oh, I remember a discussion a while back about the different software programs and the don't talk to each other and just built in inefficiencies. We need to do something about. I don't know if you caught this and in the back there, but consistency builds trust. And I think that's another great takeaway from this presentation. So looking forward, I think it's great that we have a honest evaluation of where we are now and some laudable goals. But I think we're on the, on the right track and not trying to do a relatively quick fix using, oh, technology will solve all our problems as well. Maybe if we have the right plan and technology, but appreciate the presentation this morning and I'm, I'm a big fan of circles that things are connected and you, you get a good, good flow and sometime at a later date, I will tell you the joys of personal experience in another state, getting permits for our retail Christmas tree lots and going from building to building. I didn't do that. Betty did that. So, but I have a real appreciation of how difficult and just impediments to getting through what could have been a fairly simple process. So I really appreciate the thoughtful approach to this and looking forward to making progress and hopefully getting the word out that there is no quick fix, but we we will get there. Oh, thank you.
I don't know. I prefer triangles. Like, can I see this at a triangle? I'm just kidding. I'm I'm super excited to see that this work is moving on and I'm not shocked by the, you know, findings here. We've heard from staff and from the community about the lack of consistency. The time that it takes, you know, some staff, it's taking them three or four times as long as it should to, to do their job. And I can see how, how that would be really frustrating. I wouldn't want to do that every day, you know? And on top of that, I mean, it's not fair to community members. It's not fair to our taxpayers. So yes, I think consistency and setting clear expectations to the public when they interact with us will go a long way in making our community better.
Thank you. I think it's interesting to think about how we got here. I think that technology is part of the reason we got here because every single profession develops their own software and there is these niche markets and then it just takes people off in these different parallel tracks. So we have to rein it all in and bring it all back together. And software and the systems are out there now that can do that, but it now we've made it much more expensive to do. It's, it's an interesting thing to think about. I, in terms of, I really love the approach. I think the work that's been done is great, solid. Thank you, Autumn and Reed. And I have a couple of questions. One is that in terms of the values, the clear, connected and consistent, I agree with, but I'd love to see accuracy added in there. Because, you know, if the data, if the data, data in is no good, then data out is not going to be any good either. And you could be clear, consistent and connected, but garbage. So I, I think that that's just going to, that's going to be important to keep in mind. And some systems have a way of garbling data too. So just want to make sure we keep a bead on that. Also, I was wondering, I know there are different types of approaches we can take to resolving this. Some of it is the human side and I appreciated Autumn talking about potentially having these cross-trained permit navigators so that they know the systems and the rules across the different departments and can help flex and lead people through the whole system. I think that's great. It's going to take some time, I think, in terms of people's sense of role and to, to get to that, that goes hand in hand with the computer portal. Then in terms of the kind of the backbone system, you know, the data lake that we've been talking about, that's part of what will help too, right? And so the IT is going to play a huge role here and I'm curious about that.
The data lake and I'll let Autumn respond as well, but the data lake was a theme that we talked a lot about as part of the solution and being able to take various pieces of data, accurate data, to be able to provide ourselves with better information to the public. So it absolutely was folded into that and that we felt that that was going to help resolve a lot. It's that connectivity piece that we often you know, overlook, and you said it very well, is that sometimes we, we want to solve everything by technology. And it was amazing to find out how many things we had in place throughout this. I mean, there were spreadsheet systems that I didn't know about and just all these things and nothing that really talks to one another. And so I, I think that's really what the data lake tries to, to get towards and, and to be able to resolve.
Some of the parallel systems are dictated by the state itself and I think that's part of the problem too, but yeah. Well, I'm a big supporter. I think this is great. I wish we could have done it years ago, but all of these things take time.
And I think the big, the last thing I would say is that, you know, this, this can't be just a document that we write and then let go. We got to keep going. We, we have to keep doing this work and, you know, it's, it's difficult when as a county, we're, we're not huge and we do a lot of great work and there's a lot of services to provide to our community, but we have to take the time to step back, take a look, evaluate carefully and, and do things better and smarter. And I think we can do that. Just it takes time.
Well, I appreciate the forethought to have Autumn and her team come in and facilitate because sometimes it takes that extra outside person to just keep everyone on task.
Thank you, Commissioners. If I may add one item, I'd say first, the point about accuracy in information and data is one of the key components to establishing the system. And connectedness is one way to get at it, but to your point, it's not the only way. But ensuring that these systems are at least talking to one another, that there are checks, that formats and data and standards are input. So much of that is meant to provide a more consistent, but also accurate experience on the front end and the back end. I thought, and one point, I think, as you think about the next steps to avoid having a report, just be, you know, a encapsulation of great intentions, but never actually implemented in practice is, I'd say, start with kind of the immediate next steps, the, the, for lack of a better term, the lower hanging fruit. But kind of what's right in front of us in terms of the day-to-day experience, especially on the internal side of the staff, because I believe that you will end up seeing many of those external improvements from the customer experience. You'll get to know the system better. And that was one of the key gaps that we identified as part of this process. Rick, you alluded to it earlier. That folks were learning about one another. Rick, you alluded to it earlier, that folks were learning about one another's work and often about even one another's work within their own departments or updates that have been made. And so taking that initial time in the first phase to really do and understand systems and processes, inventory information, establish agreements about processes and standards, and then to start to prepare for some of the data work that's going to be essential for a data lake anyway, regardless of what the horizon is. But getting data prepared is, has to be part of the county's roadmap to start to move forward anyway. Otherwise, that instinct to just throw another technology, throw another system at it can just compound the existing problems without ever having them embrace and really establish and integrate it as an approach. But I just wanted to thank you and say that I appreciated your comments and especially those that focused on people first and their role in driving outcomes, whereas technology is really the tool that helps to facilitate that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Malone.
Yeah. Where did my circle go? Looking at that, reminded me of this, this building and that we have most of the departments in one physical location. Not all, but, and I think that means we've got the physical layout to help this process as we go forward in, in cleaning up our processes. And I guess the last thing I'll say is I love, in addition to circles, the idea of one-stop shopping that fits within the, within the circle. And so I think we've got some things in place that will help this process and looking forward to having updates and how we're doing on our goals.
Touch on that. In the report, there is a recommendation that speaks to exploring the option to co-locate all of the services in the building, but also to assess the customer experience and what they see. And really taking a look at things like wayfinding, what does the first, what's the first indicator of where to go within the building? Is there a front, kind of a first stop kiosk that someone could use to approach, just to get information answered? And that can enhance that in-person experience. So that's one of those kind of early items to explore. And especially co-location in the same building, I think, is a potentially really strong opportunity to just bring all this together in a more literal, one-stop interpretation.
Thank you. Go forth and do good things.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Sean McGuire and Bailey Payne on Sustainable Materials Management Plan Task Force Update.
Can we take a short break, please?
We will take a five-minute break. In session with item five point four, Sustainable Materials Management Plan Task Force Update.
Thank you, Commissioners. I do want to start by saying thank you so much for your flexibility. I was here last week. April would have put me into a EPA hazmat suit and sent me off to CDC. So I appreciate the flexibility, also to Maura and her great staff and Bailey, just to kind of get everything going to this. We have a great team. It's so great to be supported by it. So, thanks for that. So I am here to kind of go through an update of the SMMP, where we're going, where we are, where we've been and where we're going. And so I'm gonna kind of hurry through the first couple of items because we really want to get your input on things like the agenda, membership, and some of the questions, the FAQ that we're developing. And so that's where we want to get your input. Takes a full forty-five? Great. If not, I'd love to save you some time. So the first one, I want to give you an update on the status. That would be pages fifty-five and fifty-six in your packet. A lot of green, a lot of yellow went to green over the past week or so. And one to let you know, we have now officially talked to all of the thirteen counties plus metro in the Northwest region of Northwest Oregon. We, and Erica's showing the map up there. In part of our interviews, we also talked to Wosco and with Deschutes. Great conversations and talking with our consultant resources, recycling resources, services. Probably not gonna include them into the task force, but doors always open for them. They have great insight, but just to focus on our region. So that would be the thirteen. Would also share that in our conversations with Classip and Columbia, interest, but not really a lot of the capacity. And they use recology as their waste services. Not a whole lot of connection. We talked to them. They were great, very receptive. And at a future date, if, if there's interest, Bailey, that's your assessment, always welcome to provide. But I think at this point, they didn't see that quite the connection that some of the more local counties are. We have, again, talked to all the counties, all the solid waste recycling experts that were identified. The, just kind of went through all of those, which has been great just to have that wealth of knowledge and expertise. And looking at that, you can see all of the green here. We're moving forward with draft agendas, speakers and talking with RRS, our consultants. They are full bore ahead, working with our two deliverables. That would be the Waste Management Map as well as the benefits and opportunities of a better materials management system in Northwest Oregon. And so those are just, we're moving right ahead. We are meeting with RRS weekly and it's been great. They are just an amazing consultant on their own, let alone the fact that they are absolutely intertwined in the Recycling Modernization Act and basically everything else. So when we talked with Joel, he's letting us know how all the other players are sinking into this, including DEQ, other initiatives. It's, it's really great to have that, that we're not stepping on toes. We're right in line with all the other different initiatives going on. So that's been very rewarding and a positive experience that we're, that we're moving in the right direction. So that is our current status on the map and where we're headed. The second thing I wanted to highlight with you on is on page fifty-two of your packet. That is, we have now secured a facilitator. We had, as you know, Steve Chase as a chair. Nothing was official back, but then when he left in June, the facilitator role was part of the original RFP proposal, but since we had Steve, we took that out. Now we put that back in. So RRS included Liz Start, and we've already met with her twice. We're gonna continue meeting with her weekly. She is fantastic. Again, being part of an expert, Bailey, you know her from previous work. A lot of the players that we were talking to know her. She also brings in a strong equity lens, which is something that we've been really pushing from the beginning. And I just thoroughly enjoyed our conversations and really helpful with us kind of walking through not just the agenda, but also the membership. And we'll get into that a little later on. We get into both of those topics. Stop there. Any questions on the, I, I do want to highlight the fact that we now have an official facilitator is a huge win. It still makes sure that Benton County is kind of pushing this initiative, but it also takes it, it's not all about us. And so having that third party, I think is gonna go a long way.
Have you, how Liz or Elizabeth, yeah. Is she familiar? Has she looked into like some of our past projects and maybe like the Benton County Tox Trash? And I'm just thinking that I want to make sure she knows what to expect as far as, you know, community engagement and community input.
We have obviously updated. She has a wealth of information, not just of Coffin Bupe, but of the Waste Management System throughout. And I think that's going to be key. This is about regional waste management and then regional material management. And I forgot my waste does not equal material sign. Completely agree that we, especially talking to DEQ, which was great with David Alloway. We're using these pressures, not just here, but throughout our region on the wayside to push the conversation that we need to be looking upstream and so as a catalyst. And so as we're looking forward to that, it's not just Coffin Bupe, it's its connection with Metro, its connection with Marion County and now with Lane County and the presentation that Lane had at AOC last week. I mean, these are all interconnected pieces, not in isolation. So she's keenly aware of that. Definitely gave her an update on the history here. And then how can we use that as the light to start looking toward a more solutions-based path in a regional sense? So, yes, she's up to speed.
Thank you.
Of course. Okay. Okay. So those are the kind of, an update on where we have been and where we are. And the great news that we do have a facilitator. We're moving forward with that. The next thing I wanted to talk with you about is the draft agenda as well as the potential membership list. So the agenda would be on page fifty of your packet. And the handout I just gave to you all is an updated version of what is on page fifty-four. And so a couple of things. One, we do have a conversation scheduled with Tillamook Commissioner Scar. That was obviously pushed back. We were supposed to meet last Tuesday. And then on the back of that, we wanted to really kind of start laying out what the membership would look like. And I wanted to take a step back and set expectations because this has been a long road. We've had different leaders in this path and how expectations have kind of varied over the months. I think at the beginning of this, some of it was, hey, we need to get everyone in the room and have these conversations. And as much as we could fill a room would be great. Because that is morphed, we are more and more looking for deliverables. And what can we do in ninety, in nine months, essentially from mid-October to June thirty? And what can we do in ninety, in nine months, essentially from mid-October to June thirtieth, when our funding for this initiative ends? I think we can all agree, there's that certain N, that certain number in which too many is just too many voices to actually get something accomplished. And so right now, in talking with the facilitator, Liz, and our little internal group of Bailey, Rick and Lindsay, somewhere in that twenty to twenty-five range, I think is pretty common of, how can we get people in to have insightful, fruitful conversations, but also have a deliverable in mind? And so that's where we're looking at this listing of potential members. And I wanted to walk you through the, through this framework. So the first, that first block up front, the list of counties, the ones in green are the ones that we have talked with. And of course, everyone said, yes, everyone had a positive reaction, but do they have capacity? Do they have, you know, how interested are they? So you'll see checkmarks on staff that we heard a very positive experience that they want to. Marion, Brian May, and Marion County, Jeff, and Lane County definitely want to be a part of this. And so that's why you see checkmarks. You'll also see a couple of checkmarks by the electeds, obviously one here in Benton County, as well as Marion, like Kevin. And so we want to fill those up to make sure that the door is always open for Polk and Tillamook and Yamhill, without question. Who that could be, if it's not, who else is a leader, something to make sure we have a regional approach. Again, we talked to everybody. The door is open. Now it's just a matter of, can we fill it? And if not, that's fine, too. We have an open seat for someone else. So that is on the local government side. On the bottom there, and I should say the green again, those are the ones that have said they want to be involved. On the bottom there, again, these are the groups, associations, constituencies that we feel are going to be important. You will see on the bottom there, you've heard me say this every time I presented. I think one of the biggest challenges we're going to have is the difference between Waste Management and Material Management. We have all the Waste Management experts from the counties up top. Now we need to backfill those in with the Material Management so that there's a balanced conversation. Mr. West, as you said, we can't ignore our landfills and our transfer stations and our haulers and all those things. But if we're really going to deal with a six and a half million tons of waste in Oregon, let alone just the one point one here, and Arlington and all the other, we need to go upstream and hit that hard. And so that's why you see some of the Material Management Innovators, experts. I have found it very successful in systems or in thoughts in which it's so ingrained, you can't see an option. Let's get DEQ in. Let's get these innovators and say, yeah, there are options. There are other jurisdictions that are doing this. How can we do this? Hey, let's emulate Seattle. Let's emulate Terre Haute, Indiana, wherever it is. It can be done. Let's try it here. So that's why you see a lot of these innovators and experts. Also, this is sustainability. This is economy, equity, environment. So we want to make sure that we have equity involved, not just with a facilitator, which is great, but having a voice there. And she has been great in identifying a handful of, either Portland or in that area, that was part of their code amendments. And so it's not just having a voice there. How do you make change? Like, how do you really change the system? So very excited to be reaching out to them. You'll see Oregon Legislature's Environmental Caucus staff. That's Captain Duval, who is on BCTT. Commissioner West, coming back to your point, as well as the OSU Solid Waste, that's John Dool, who is also part of BCTT. So we want to make sure we have that connection. Ryan May and Shane Sanderson from Marion and Lynn County, respectively, were also part of that. So we still have a connection of the catalyst of why we're talking about this in the first place. So this is our, we have talked with these folks. We've gotten verbal yeses, but none of them have been official. Bailey might be the first if we ask them, I'll put them on the spot. But that is our next step this week, getting your perspective. So I want to stop there. Want to, as I said, on the membership side, your thoughts? If there's major gaps that you're seeing and how to make sure that, since this is your initiative, we're moving forward in a holistic collaborative way.
Sean, I just have a, I'm sorry, Chair, go ahead. Just jumping. If we can just kind of go to deep dive, that this does not necessarily have to do with our landfill Coffin-Bute and why this is an approach of a regional approach. I know, I don't like to just keep hammering on messaging, but just want to make.
Absolutely. This is not about Coffin-Bute specifically. This is about Waste Management regionally. And there, I want to be also very clear, there's other avenues for the conversation about Coffin-Bute, several. DSEC comments here, Planet Commission, it's on hiatus now because it was deemed incomplete by our Community Development Office. When that rubs back up, there's plenty of opportunity for the public to get involved in that. But no, it's not about Coffin-Bute per se. It's about how this whole region works together. We have Republic Service, Waste Connections, Recology, there are haulers, there's a ton of private sectors, which leads me to the second point. And this is another thing, maybe before we get into the membership. Over the past month or so, it, there's been this really great conversation about how do we, what do we want out of this? And it's every, every conversation we have with the experts, do we include the private sector or not the private sector? And it's been a fascinating, again, since I'm not, I'm a little bit detached, and Bailey is. It was half and half. I mean, some haulers are innovators, some, you know, you sign the dotted line and that's your contract and you move on. Same thing with franchise agreements. We've come with a strong recommendation to get our house in order. That's why when you see there, when you see that you're not seeing private sectors much. We do have one, which is Jerry, oh, yes, who is retired, but has that overarching. So he doesn't really have a flag and the conversation with him was fantastic. It was great. But just to make sure that we're in agreement, that we're looking at this, how do local governments work? How do we, why are we having fifteen individual hauling or franchise agreements? Why does each city and county have its own hauling agreements? We are all isolated. And in this process, it's been very clear, counties don't really talk that much with each other. And so how can we start looking at this? And that's when the conversation's really ramped up. How can counties and municipalities come together and say, hey, Republic Service, you're not just going with us, you're going with others? Jeff and Lane had a fantastic idea. Can we insert language into all of our agreements and say, you will do X? You will go to the closest landfill, regardless if it's yours or not. And to start to give a, explore that regional collaboration that is not here right now. So that was one other thing to potentially come up from local government's perspective and then engage them from December until June. And I want to be crystal clear, we still have those other six to eight months to really get the work done. This is just the kickoff, and that's what it is. It's a kickoff to start identifying what those questions are. So those are the two things. Yes, this is about Waste Management regionally, as well as Material Management regionally. And that the intent of this and the kickoff is to really kind of look in a mirror of how we local governments are working together or not in a collaborative way to Waste Management. So, okay.
I wanted to let you know that I spoke with Commissioner Gordon from Polk County last week. And he said that they're definitely interested, but he didn't know whether they'd have the capacity. But the Commissioner Pope, Craig Pope, was definitely the right person to talk to. So I'm happy to make that introduction.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I think that this is shaping up really well. I'm thrilled to see that it's much, much more solid now. I, the additional representation section is part of what interests me, of course. It sounds like you have names provisionally for several of these roles, including that Waste and Recycling Industry Position, the retiree that you mentioned.
If I can just, really quick, the only reason I don't have them is I, this is, that's not me. I just feel uncomfortable seeing my name if I had have been in, like, wait, I wasn't even asked yet, and then I'm in some public meeting. So that was on me. I just didn't want to have someone seeing their name on a list. So that was.
Perfectly understandable. The Equity Environmental Justice piece is one that I wouldn't mind diving into a little bit more. I think it'd be great to involve someone from the metro area that has a lot of expertise in duking things out at the political level when it comes to the environmental solutions. There are some great groups up there. But I'm also concerned that we have someone from the local area. Because although this is not about Coffin-Bute, I think that we have to have local representation on the group. I don't know who that is necessarily, whether it's someone from the Valley Neighbors for Environmental Quality or the Sustainability Coalition, or Beyond Toxic, or, you know, some other environmental, or the Linn-Benton Health Equity Alliance. I don't know. But I think that that's an important decision.
I, to follow up on that, one, again, one, and this is not shocking news, but the rural urban divide and having metro, but also getting into the rural areas is completely different beast. And that's come up over and over and over again, especially with Liz. And so again, yes, here locally Tibetan County, but also we're looking at these different waste diversion, diversion, pilot projects, little programs. It is a far different cry when you're looking in Dallas or something versus metro in Portland. So, yeah.
Volume matters.
It does.
Well, a couple of things. Tillamook's in yellow and I think it's correct, a hundred percent of their waste goes to Coffin-Bute. So I hope there's, there's some kind of direct representation or maybe collaboration with Lincoln County and more of a, maybe a one person representing, trying to represent two counties. Because I, I think that's important. And the other folks that are in yellow are state electeds. And I think that's important to have one or two people that are familiar and maybe have the time to, if not attend, at least monitor and give some feedback. I can see kind of a conflict with the twenty-twenty-five legislative session and this effort. But I can see a need for legislation going forward, or at least have that, have that capacity. But I, I'm thrilled that we're to this stage. And it's taken a while and a few bumps in the road. And but to have a date for the kickoff in about a month is exciting. And like you say, you have people under additional representation to firm up. And I think you're on the right track, talking about twenty-eight to twenty-five official members. And that's a pretty big number, but I can see, well, not everybody shows up at every meeting. And so maybe you're in the fifteen to twenty range as far as who's showing up at meetings. But I think there's a few holes to fill. But it looks like you're three quarters of the way there, which is a lot better than we were a month or two ago.
Three things to answer your, your points. And I'll begin with the fact that it's a month away. It's exciting. That's one adjective. I can think of a few others. One, to get into Tillamook, I'm really looking forward to a meeting with Commissioner Scar. The staff person there, great, really energetic, no capacity, like zero negative Kelvin. So hopefully we can get the commissioner. The two of us and Rick, and Liz, you're really talking with our consultant regarding getting someone from the state to maybe, that represents that areas, maybe Yamhill and those areas that aren't represented specifically. We kind of give not just an overview from the legislative, but also that region. And so we're trying to, when we get into the actual names, you're going to see, I'm trying to get as many people that wear five or six hats. And that way they can hit several different layers. And then the last, oh, yeah, and then those are representatives to make sure we do have a state. Whether it's legislation, budgetary policy, or whatever, just to kind of have that, you know, we need to be vertical as well. Local, state, state agencies, administrative, legislative, all those will give us, I think, a good path moving forward for long-term success.
And of course, we want to keep congressional staff in the loop. It won't serve on this, but making sure that they are on mailing list is important. Are there any other questions or comments at this time? I do note that the program has changed and it's gone from being an evening event to a daytime event and a bit longer than we had initially envisioned. I think that's a solid plan. It is an Association of Oregon County State anyway, so I would envision being in Salem anyway that day. But, yeah.
Yeah, we, moving over to the actual agenda itself, thank you for that segue over there. We did, we started to think if we're going to start having people drive from Portland, Newport to, from Eugene and to have, and to bring a real kickoff, that this was going to be a bigger event than, you know, one or two-hour night meeting, that this really is. Plus, if you go through, you know, this is largely going to be informational. And we kind of went back and forth on that. There's going to be dialogue at the end moving forward. What can we do in the next three months? What can we do in the next nine months? But when you start looking at the beginning, that really is the BCT, history on the BCTT, case studies to kind of give an understanding of where we can go. But just to give RRS an opportunity for them to go through their two major deliverables that we're paying them to do. That's why they're on there for, I think, an hour or hour fifteen on its own. And to really get these experts, is the map working? Does it capture the system approach? Does it do all these things? Should be a healthy dialogue to set everyone's expectations and kind of vision of what, how this system, because I don't think a lot of people, you know, it's very isolated until you dive into, when you talk to the experts that are familiar with this, that's when you start saying, oh, yeah, this is all one system. You pull one lever and all the other strings start moving. So, yeah, the more we talked about this, the more, and that also is RRS and the facilitator. So we're not just kind of, okay, sit there and we're just going to throw information or presentations at you as fast as you can. That doesn't help anyone. And so really allowing that conversation. One of those things, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go with others. Make sure that everyone is on the same page. So you are right. And then you'll also see some of the intents of the, of our event, which does also mean a little longer. We just keep on pounding this over and over. This is a solution-based path. This is a call to action using Rick's words, you know. The pressures that are on us today require change, systemic functional change, not just tweaking at the edges. And so that's where we want to go. And to look at what's possible, look what it's impossible. But at least we have an understanding of where we need to go to change the actual way we go through the day-to-day operations into something that's more regenerative, also financially more prudent, and all these different ways of just not doing the same thing over and over again. And the other one we heard over and over again, we cannot recycle our way out of this. We can't solar panel our way out of climate change. We can't recycle our way out of Waste Management. And so we need to start changing the game. So you'll see their intended outcomes and the purpose and intent. This is the yellow block on the map of where now we're in that elevator speech, FAQs, which we want to get into next. Why are we doing this? Intents and that whole thing. So that's, all the pieces are finally coming back, coming together. So we'll begin that very quickly.
Sounds good.
Okay.
FAQs are next.
Yes, they are.
Would you mind putting them back up on the screen? My computer has died.
Page fifty-seven. So the reason we are coming to you today is to get your perspect.
Could you make them a little bit larger, please? My eyesight's good, but not that good. My eyesight's good, but not that good.
Over, uh, enlarging the background. Uh, you all remember the Waste Management FAQ. The process was to get the questions first and to get, kind of get them in an order that made sense, but also capturing the actual questions. We have the answers to these. The question is from you all, what kind of questions are you receiving from constituents? Uh, this is the product of me, Bailey, Rick, Lindsay, kind of show R R S and others just to say, what are the normal day-to-day questions you're getting from constituents and what, what is this? What is the intended outcome? Big one is what's the difference between waste and materials? Um, so often that is used interchangeably. And so, and we did have all your answers today. If you're reviewing them and you're kind of going through this, you know where we sit and you can provide a feedback on that as well. But this was our first kind of, what is the purpose? Who'd we talk to? What is a plan? That is a huge issue, as we, as I said a couple of weeks ago. Plan means anything to everyone. Be very specific. It could be very frameworky. It could be all different kinds of things. What is it that we're actually looking for? What can be done in nine months? Why, why should we be? Uh, we have, we've been hearing, well, D E Q already has a twenty fifty plan. Why are you even doing this? Talking to D E Q, there's plenty of work to do. Even the plan looks at local governments as the implementer. So that's why. And so wanted to get either your initial feedback or you can kind of stew on this for a bit and hear, uh, and share with us what you're hearing from constituencies.
Well, at, um, first look, uh, these are, uh, these are the right questions.
Okay.
Um, I've fielded many of them. And, uh, I think that uh, one of the other things that we're going to want to add to it as it becomes clearer is, um, what are, what are the outcomes? We know what, uh, what? But I think that's going to, we can have desired outcomes, but, um, that will emerge over time. I suspect that we may have a couple of additional questions that emerge over the next six to eight weeks.
Yep.
But I think this is a great start.
Um, your question that says, why should I care about this? I mean, I think that's a fair, very good question, but I just wonder if there's another way to phrase it.
Sure.
Cause it kind of, it made me chuckle to myself a little bit, you know, why should I care about this? Maybe something like, um, you know, why is this important? Or, you know, why is this important to our community? Take it or leave it.
We definitely want to have this. This could be kind of esoteric for some folks. Others, it's, yeah, they're very heart and they're very being. So just want to make sure that, uh, you don't have to be in a Deer Village Lodgeet and Alsey and everywhere in between has, you know, we all have a, a pony in this race and making sure that you understand why it matters. So. But thank you for that.
Uh, as far as the questions here, um, in general, they're more, um, big picture than most of the, uh, uh, concerns that, that I've gotten anyway. And I, I think that's, uh, a step in the right direction to, um, get away from the kind of narrow focus on local, uh, issues and, uh, as far as Coffin Butte, it is a regional facility and, uh, we, we need a, a regional discussion of, uh, that, uh, aspect of the S M M B, uh, discussion. So, uh, uh, I don't think I have any, uh, questions to, uh, add at this point, but, uh, I, I probably will. And, uh, what this seems like a good, um, summary of, uh, what we need to be talking about.
That's really good to hear. Those are the questions I have for you. Then that was pretty much the end of what we needed and then we'll be back with you soon as we gear up for October twenty-first.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on. I, um, wondering whether Toby Lewis is with us online? There she is.
I am, yeah.
Okay.
Morning.
Good morning. We have our quarterly floodplain program update from, uh, Community Development with Toby Lewis.
Okay, so, um, you guys have had a lot of heavy topics to listen to this morning. Um, thank you first of all for being able to present remotely. I'm getting ready to start attending the Northwest Regional Floodplain Management Association Conference. Uh, it's going to be kicking off here in a little bit, but, um, I don't promise to have, uh, all entirely light topics, but we'll start off with, with one and, um, then have one that's a little heavier and then we'll get back into, um, easier ones. So can you see the PowerPoint on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Erica gave me great instructions for how to share my, my screen. So I wanted to make sure it was working. Um, okay, so first top, there's, I have four topics today, flood map revisions, um, the integration of National Flood Insurance Program and the Nature Species Act, um, that's a bigger one. And then some fun ones about, uh, flood information on website and some flood program recognition. Um, so the flood map revision project, we currently have two of them going on. Um, the first, the shorter term one, um, and I've talked to you a little bit about this today, uh, or I'm sorry, in the past. But I wanted to give you an update. The Lucky Water Shed project, you'll see in the, the overview area that's along the, um, up in the Hoskins Kings Valley area. Um, we have an open house the end of May, that went really well. Um, and Corps of Engineers is the lead agency on this project. They also have been working with FEMA for data, um, data on the flood hazards in the area. And we are hoping to have, um, have that data finalized and then submit the information to FEMA with a letter for, oh, sorry, a request for a letter of map revision. Um, the goal is hopefully by the end of this year. Um, once it's submitted, FEMA will review the data, make any adjustments that they may think is needed. Um, and then the goal is approval. We had a joint status check-in project um, between FEMA and the Corps of Engineers the end of last month. Um, and both agencies are on board with, with how this project is going as well as the next project, which is the Upper Willamette Watershed uh, area for Benton County. FEMA also included the Alsey watershed area. So by completing these two projects, the Lucky and the, and the Upper Willamette watershed with Alsey, that will cover all of Benton County. Um, the map that you're seeing on the right of the screen is just what's covered by the Upper Willamette um, project. So all of Benton County, portions of Polk, Lynn and Lane County. Um, the bottom two images here, the left hand is, is FEMA's coping map that identifies what kinds of flood studies are being done along different streams and rivers in the county. The right hand is just to give you, I'm sorry, the center image on the bottom is just to give you an idea of what areas in Benton County are currently mapped as flood hazard. So everything in gray, you see the Willamette River along the east side of the county, the Mary's River that goes, uh, about halfway down about central county, moving from west to, I'm sorry, east to west there. Um, those are the main areas, but we also have some other areas in there. This project, um, there will be a flood risk review meeting sometime. Right now it says fall twenty twenty-four. That was the most recent information I had at the time. That may be pushed back into, um, into winter. Well, it will be pushed back into winter since we're, we're halfway through September, but it's coming. Um, preliminary map review will be occurring hopefully in twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-seven timeframe. So that's where FEMA, um, provides draft maps that are available for public review and, uh, works on, um, community engagement with the, with the county to get information out. Um, there's still a few years out, as you can see, um, but, but the goal is, is to get this wrapped up um, fairly soon. So, well, soon on the eight to ten year timeframe and, and we are moving right along. Um, this one, so this is the National Flood Insurance Program and Endangered Species Act. Um, we submitted the, we met with, um, the board. Sorry, the, the group that I've got, I've been working with to review the draft documents and comment on those. Um, or on behalf of Benton County as a cooperating agency in the environmental impact statement process. Um, met with the board, um, the end of August and, um, sorry, I lost my spot in my notes. Um, yeah. So we met with the board in August and submitted the, the comments on the last two documents. There'll be another, um, meeting I'm sure coming up. The, but the, the point is the comments were submitted. The seminar group topic there, um, last week, the Oregon Seminar Group held a a day-long seminar on floodplain management in Oregon. Um, key takeaways from that are that, um, FEMA is still working on the reporting tool. So for the upcoming Endangered Species Act requirements in floodplains. Um, FEMA is working on a reporting tool that all communities will be required to use to track permitted impacts to the three key floodplain functions that are meant to be protected. So those are the, uh, flood storage, impervious surface, and then tree quantity and size. Um, FEMA has also been able to, to start responding to inquiries that have been sent to the pre-implementation compliance measures email. They have a specific email inbox for that and have for a few months. Um, but they've, they've been working with their legal counsel to make sure that the responses um, are passing all of the requirements, uh, for responding. So there was a, a couple of months delay there, but they're now able to start responding. The pre-implementation compliance measures, so that's the third bullet and I'll talk some more about that in a minute. Um, according to FEMA are still on track, um, with their current timeline. And the other general takeaway from the, the seminar on Wednesday was that was relating to mitigation banks. So having a mitigation bank to help offset impacts to those three floodplain functions, um, is an option. If it's, if it's something that a community wants to pursue, um, but the, it's not going to be, uh, use of necessarily, it won't necessarily be use of a wetland mitigation bank. A wetland mitigation bank may have, um, may also provide protection for some of those floodplain functions of flood storage and impervious surface and, and tree um, replenishment, but it's not necessarily automatically designed or set up to do that. And so if a community is wanting to pursue the mitigation bank option, they may need to set up a variety of mitigation bank types. So it may be that the community has a mitigation bank for flood storage. And another type of, another mitigation bank that offsets impacts to impervious surface. Or that, another one that replants trees. You may be able to put all three of those together or a couple of those together, but it's just something to, um, that's been mentioned and, and it's kind of being discussed because not all mitigation banks are created the same. Um, so our next topic is the, um, the big one, um, pre-implementation compliance measures. So that acronym on that one is PICOM. Um, these are the, what, these are the, um, requirements that FEMA sent out a letter about, uh, a couple of months ago. We've been looking at them and, and seeing what, what's required. The three options, these are, these are for the measures that communities are expected to start doing beginning January first of this year. And with the expectation that final requirements will be done, um, twenty twenty-six uh, timeframe. So um, the three options for this are uh, prohibiting all development in floodplain for a community, develop, uh, adopting a model ordinance. And, um, that, that accomplishes or requires the activities that will protect those three floodplain functions. Or reviewing all development in a community floodplain on a permit-by-permit basis. And requiring a habitat assessment plan and making sure that that habitat assessment plan meets the standards to protect those three functions. Um, another piece, uh, that came up in, in the seminar last week was that many communities are stating that implementation by that January one deadline is not possible and are requesting more time. And many communities are also saying that all three options, not just the model ordinance, will require uh, an ordinance adoption, um, which takes longer than the timeframe from, from when the letter was sent out to January first. It takes longer than the timeframe from when the model ordinance, the, the pre-implementation measures model ordinance was sent out to January. Um, and it also takes longer than the one month between when communities have to notify FEMA um, which option they're choosing. So that deadline is December first. Um, and so, and there's a one-month timeline between December first and the implementation that requirement of January first. Um, so that's something that's under discussion. It's something, um, that the group that I've been working with has been discussing. Uh, I will be, since this is a larger topic, I'll be bringing it back to the board, um, but I would like some feedback on which type of meeting would be most appropriate, um, to discuss that out. So, um, for, let's see. Um, the, the other issues that were, that have been identified are the implementing implications of ordinance adoptions. So if a community chooses to adopt the model ordinance or language, um, into their, their code that meets the, the model ordinance requirement. Um, there are questions about whether or not Measure Fifty-Six notifications would apply to that. Um, whether those, the standards in the model ordinance are meeting the clear and objective standards requirements. And the impacts of the ordinance on, on housing directives. So those are all things that, that are still being discussed, um, and haven't been fully finalized, but, but they're in the works. Um, so this, that's the, the pre-implementation measures. So from sort of now until twenty twenty-six. The long-term final implementation measures, we're still looking into those. Um, let's move the slide up a bit. So one of the things that we've talked about, talked a lot about, um, and that keeps coming up is the riparian buffer zone idea. So I've got three screenshots here that, that Webster and my department was creating enough to put together, uh, for today's presentation. Um, start with the wide blue area that you can see through. That's the hundred-year floodplain. The darker blue area, um, that's all squiggly there, that is the one hundred and seventy feet approximately, one hundred and seventy-foot buffer that is riparian buffer zone area. That is the 170 feet approximately, 170-foot buffer that is riparian buffer zone area. Um, so this is the area where where the highest mitigation ratios would be required. So if I'm, I have a vacant piece of land and it's in the the 100-year floodplain, that blue shaded area that you can see through, there are still requirements if I um pave over a section of my property, if I have a vacant piece of land and I build a house um or any kind of building, um, or if I remove trees of a certain height, uh, or I'm sorry, a certain diameter, um, those types of activities would require mitigation. Um, once I move that project into the dark blue shading area, so the 170 feet, that's going to require a higher mitigation ratio. So that would be more along the lines of two to one or three to one or higher than that, depending on what the, what the function is that I'm impacting. Um, and where on the, whether I'm mitigating that action on the property or at a location offsite. The green shading, that's, we're getting narrower as we go. So the green shading is our current 50-foot green setback. So that is, that functions more along the lines of like a property line setback. Um, if the stream or the river or the water body is inside of the flood hazard area, the current development code says that you can't build any structures there. There's no requirement for mitigating impacts to um impervious surface or for mitigating impacts to trees or vegetation. You just can't put a structure there. So our code already has some protection um for the 50-foot buffer, but not in all of the same ways that will be required um for final implementation of these requirements. Um, and then the the teal shaded or teal lines that you see in there are the water bodies, so creeks, streams, ponds, um, that kind of thing. This area is uh just south of the Mary's River, uh, Bell Fountain Road, Airport Road. Um, so this is, we've got Bollamith area up top. We've got Chapel Drive and then 13th and Fern coming right down the middle of the the image here. So the the really wide blue shading area here on the right is the Mary's River floodplain and Evergreen floodplain. Um, the blue and teal striping that you're seeing in here, that's the floodway. So that will also have higher mitigation protections in it. And I'm, I'm not expecting everybody to like capture all of this today. It's just to kind of get you thinking, get some ideas and images in your head um about what kinds, you know, where where these regulations are going to apply. Um, my best recollection of about the floodway area will be protected similarly to the 170-foot dark blue shaded area. Um, so that floodway area right now has some pretty significant restrictions on it. Any development, it does allow development, but any development cannot cause the floodwater to rise at all um during a flood event. So a person would, an applicant would need to hire an engineer and have a no-rise analysis prepared. Um, but there are no current uh requirements for mitigating activity in that area. Only that you have to make sure that your, your house, your barn, your, um, I don't know, building a berm, um, that that's not going to cause the water elevation during the 100-year flood event to be higher than it's currently modeled. Um, and then the other image, this one is the Alsey area. Um, so Alsey Highway going across the top of the image and Alsey Deadwood Highway coming down the um, just to the right of center. Alsey also has a, a floodway modeled through um a long part of the the river. There's a um 100-year floodplain. Oh, the orange shading is the 500-year flood hazard area. So that currently is not part of the regulated flood hazard area. Um, it's a advisory area, um, but it's, and it's meant to identify medium risk, but it, it is not part of the, the flood hazard regulatory area that um the Endangered Species Act regulations would apply to. Okay, um, oh, oh, let me see if there's anything else. So, oops, there we go. Um, so, yeah, the, the 50-foot versus 100-foot, 70-foot buffer area is is kind of a big one. We may have an option to um reduce that based on some studies, and we're looking into um how to evaluate that based on FEMA's draft guidance that will be become finalized uh later, later on as this project moves forward. Um, and we're um had a good conversation with City of Corvallis the other day. Um, and we'll continue to be open to conversations with cities and and other agencies and counties um and looking for opportunities to partner with OFU as well. And we're mostly just working on identifying some, you know, what other questions we need to be asking to be able to really effectively evaluate the um what's going to sit best for Benton County. Okay, so that's the big one. Um, this one is, is one of the fun ones. So this is, um, we are in community development and across the county, um, we're working on updating our uh webpages. So um, Community Development webpage has a new look um with updated information, and the goal is also improve navigation. When you're on the Community Development website, there are six tiles um down here uh on the page. Flood information has been moved to the Environmental Resources aisle. Um, so when people click on Environmental Resources, then it will open up a flood, flood page and you can choose, a new page you can choose flood prevention. So there's several other tiles on that, that new page, but flood prevention is one of them. Um, the screenshot on the right-hand side of the page is just to give you an idea. The flood information portion of our website is not finalized yet. Um, but it should, it's in place and we've got the enough to at least post with the understanding that it is still under um, under review and editing. Um, so we've got a, a nice layout. Hopefully it is encouraging people to, you know, helping people step through the information um and find information that they are looking for quicker. Um, making sure that the floodplain information on our website has all of the required information there is also part of our community rating system yearly updates. So those will be due October 15th, um, so sometime between now and then. Uh, this information hopefully will be being updated even more and and become even more user-friendly. But um, just kind of a piece of exciting news and and I've got a nice new look on there uh for people to look through. And then the last topic is just a, just to let you know that we are, the county is still very much being talked about in great ways in terms of collaboration and um uh getting information out to property owners and also um having, having conversations with people um in a way that's, that's valued and and well-received. So um, the two, two examples, most recent examples of that are the Mid Willamette Valley flood map workshop that we hosted last September. People are still talking about that one. Um, and in fact, I was requested to be part of a joint presentation last month to the National Silver Jackets um monthly meeting to just do a, a case study slash lessons learned on that project because the uh state and federal agencies saw a huge benefit to that project. So um, the uh, the Lucky Mute Watershed Flood Map Open House was, is another one that people are still talking about. Um, so these are pictures of of both, both events. Um, and then um FEMA is also working on a project um to start highlighting flood risk communication um with, between FEMA and communities and also between communities and residents, um, and highlighting collaborative efforts. Uh, because a lot of times seems like the, most of the information that is sent out is, or not sent out, but most of the information that people hear is that FEMA comes to town and they give, they create these new maps and it's kind of an imposing uh conversation when really the goal is collaboration. And so they're, they're trying to highlight uh situations where it has been a collaborative effort and it's been well-received. Um, and they're going to be working on some, some outreach regarding that. And so um, they're considering a number of communities. Uh, Benton County is one of the communities that they're thinking about. So if, if that um moves forward, they're still scoping the project. But if that moves forward, then I would be coming to the board with a, a formal request for um, for support and participating in that project. So I think that covers it all, and I am happy to try and answer questions. I know there's a lot of, um, a lot of information there.
Um, I guess, uh, first question, Toby, is the uh expansion of the riparian buffer zone from 50 to 170 feet, i- is that uh where we're headed? Or uh what's the uh process there?
Um, so that is the minimum standard that's required. It's not necessarily, so expanding it to 170 feet and adding in the mitigation requirement is, is kind of the cookie cutter approach um to complying with, with the Endangered Species Act requirements in the floodplanes that will be coming up. Um, it is not required to have that setback distance be that wide necessarily, but it becomes the community's requir- um responsibility to document if that setback size is too big. So if a community chooses not to document that a smaller setback is appropriate, then 170-foot is, is where it stays.
And that's 100, that's 170 feet on each side? Which adds up to 340 feet plus the stream itself?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is a big change um for landowners to assimilate. Um, I've lived in other, been visited in other places where they have much bigger stream buffers. Um, and it allows rivers to do their thing in a much more natural way without risk of any kind of structural or human um damage um most of the time. But it's, it's, I know it's not popular. So I really appreciate the constructive way that um you're addressing the, the questions and figure out how we can achieve the objectives um within the guidance that FEMA is providing without being um, and just trying to obstruct the process. Uh, but I'm curious to know among your peers across the county, um, what are the perspectives much more just against it and wishing it would all go away at this point?
Um, I think, I think from just, if, if you're talking, like if, if the question is focused on just the knee-jerk reaction of having to develop new regulations or implement new regulations and implement new processes, I think the knee-jerk reaction would be nice to go away. Um, but if you're also including in, into that question, um, what's the best fit? What's the, you know, what makes sense? What are we trying to protect? Um, what needs protecting? Um, then I, I don't think you get the same response. I think um people are more understanding um when that perspective is thrown into the question as well, um, but it's still a big project. Um, there's, there's a lot to be done and the timelines are changing somewhat. So the final implementation timeline is, is remaining pretty steady, but the pre-implementation compliance measures um are, are a new development that nobody was expecting.
A little bit too tight.
That's kind of from, yeah. It was very much too tight. So, so right now, the general, the general consensus seems to be, or the, the majority consensus seems to be that um what's being asked for in the, in the pre-implementation phase um is too fast and not implementable on that timeframe.
Yeah.
But the final measures, we can maybe get there um and, and could be doable.
Good, okay. Well, I appreciate the regular updates I had seen from, um, again, Association of Oregon Counties that um, no one's happy about what the timeline for the pre-implementation. And I completely understand. Um, I would agree with that.
Uh, on a more positive note, I, I participated in the Kings Valley Open House uh last May and, and found it to be informative and wished more of my neighbors had uh shown up. I, I remember, I think it was the Corps of Engineers person uh in, when you say Corps of Engineers, I was not expecting a, a good speaker and uh informative. So he, he can come back anytime, but I, I think he was the one that um mentioned that the Lucky Mute River was uh more well-behaved than it uh should be. And I think that uh maybe ties in with more than 100 years ago and, and uh splash dams for moving logs downstream, which was terrible from a ecological point of view because it just reamed out uh everything in its path. And, but uh maybe we are the beneficiaries of a river that stays within its banks uh better than the, the models uh show that it should.
Yeah, um, thank you for the feedback. I'll, I'll let Paul know. That was um Paul Sclafani, and he, he does a great job when he, he comes and speaks, so, yeah.
And I guess the other positive note is that uh FEMA uh kind of making the flood maps more, much more accurate than uh, uh, I guess 2010 version or whenever this process started. So uh, I think that's another uh positive aspect of this process.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, um, thank you very much, Toby. You have anything else for us?
Um, just a, a quick question. Do you have a preference on the type, meeting type um for bringing the pre-implementation compliance?
Oh, probably goal-setting. I think that it would be good to, to really be able to dig into the pros and cons of the different um pre-implementation approaches. Um, definitely have some thoughts about mitigation banking and, and just locally. Um, I'm assuming that that could be a regional kind of a facility. But um, I know that Knife River, um, their gravel pit across the river here off 34, they're talking about winding it down. Um, that is a huge potential area where there could be fantastic riparian mitigation conducted. Um, likewise, Hollingsworth and Bost doesn't need their water retention ponds anymore, and they're also right in the floodplain and might be another area. So there might be some partnerships that we could embark upon if, you know, regionally, um, if that were um to be a direction we could take.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think I think that covers it. Thank you.
Well, enjoy your conference.
Thanks. It'll be a good one.
Okay, next up, we are going to shift one of our items so that we can allow Christopher Jacobs to come up and not have to wait any longer. But we will now address item six point two, adoption of a resolution establishing an enterprise zone school support fee rate.
Good morning. You've had a busy meeting ahead of you here this this day, and I won't take up too much time with this agenda item. I know we covered a bit of it during the work session. Last night, the city council passed the resolution. That's before you. School district has passed the resolutions. The last step to establishing the school support fee for the enterprise zone program. And so I don't have a huge staff report. I'm just here to answer questions.
Are there any questions?
Would you give a little background on how how this enterprise zones for schools would work?
Sure. So businesses receiving tax exemption under the enterprise zone program have an option for a fourth and a fifth year exemption. Establishing the fee rate with the resolution before you would have set that rate at fifteen percent. The school invoices the business directly is responsible for collecting payment. And there's written into the law allowable late fees and penalties for not meeting that requirement. I think it's a new phenomenon that schools will have this relationship with businesses. That businesses will be directly funding schools through a portion of their tax exemption. And so that's sort of how it would work. There's some guidance from OIDA and the League of Oregon Cities that speculates about the impact of the effect on local school districts. So it states it's possible that fees will not increase local budgets as fees must be included as local revenue and school funding formula calculations. And in most cases will be offset by reduced state school fund distributions. And so we really think of this as a transfer of the responsibility from the state to businesses receiving benefit under the state, under the enterprise zone tax exemption program. There is a possibility that statewide funding for schools may marginally increase, but when you consider the administrative burden imposed by this legislation, it's pretty small if there'd be any benefit to a local school district. I think that's kind of evidenced by the fact that Corvallis Public Schools chose the absolute minimum fee rate of fifteen percent. Could have asked for thirty percent. Some school districts may. Corvallis Public Schools has only asked for fifty.
Is that rate mutable? Can they come back and change their minds?
I think once you've established that fee rate, if all the bodies who passed the resolution were amenable to changing it, that's a possibility. I'm not sure what interest we might have in doing so.
I don't think that we would initiate it. No, but yeah, I'm just wondering. If this opens the door.
Does.
So to clarify, the school district bills the individual businesses and then they theory collect money and then because they've gotten more revenue, the state may reduce the amount going to the school district.
Correct, because it increases the local revenue.
So it actually creates a direct relationship between the district and the businesses. It doesn't come through our assessment.
No, for the first time, which you know, kind of negates the marginal increase potentially offset by the cost and administrative burden, this new responsibility.
Interesting. Any further questions?
I have a question, Christopher. As in your role in economic development, how how does this benefit our businesses?
Well, it doesn't.
I know. Are you supporting? Do you find that this is a?
No, no, I I would say that want to be delicate about it because want to wait and see what the effect is, right? You're somewhat speculating about the future. However, I'm confident in saying that any time you dilute the benefit of a tax exemption program, you really harm those businesses that need that benefit most in order to expand or start a new business. There are so few economic development programs out there. Vast majority of my visits with local businesses trying to navigate incentives, it's been hard to find a fit with the programs offered at the state. This is one of the few that are widely used. And the benefit is being diluted through this legislation. So it's it's not something I would advocate or support from my perspective as an economic developer practitioner.
But it's a legislative mandate and it, as you say, it's more of a transfer of responsibility for a small portion off of the state's budget and on to others.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, and could it be characterized as the lesser of two evils? This fifteen percent tax in lieu of potentially losing all of your tax exemption in year four and five?
Yeah, if folks wanted to make a principled stand, we'll see if anyone does. That would be the alternative is not being able to grant a tax exemption at all in years four and five. And of course, I'm sympathetic to state budgets. You know, I know that they are limited and they're seeking creative solutions. But this is not one of those that I would advocate for.
Any further discussion?
So are we voting for a necessary evil?
That is how it was received at the city council meeting last night. Understanding that the the alternative, not passing the resolution of minimum fee rate has more harm to the businesses that we're seeking to serve than establishing a fifteen percent rate.
Because the alternative is losing years four and five?
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. I'm ready for a motion.
I'll move to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty four, day zero two three, to establish the enterprise zone school support fee rate.
Second. All in favor, signify with an I. I.
I.
I. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving back now to the wildfire hazard map discussion. Just looking for a report on the meeting that was held. I think it was two weeks ago now and I do not think there's any action, but just an update and make sure that we're all in accord.
Sure. I thought we discussed a little bit at one of our last meetings and I did send a quick email as a follow up. My what I witnessed, my takeaway is that a lot of the counties, most of the counties over in eastern Oregon are have heartburn with the fact that they're rated as higher risk or hazard. And I think our concerns were the opposite. Some of ours might not have been, you know, rated high enough. So kind of different ways of looking at it. I did see that we got an email from the Jackson County Board of Commissioners asking us to sign onto a letter to the governor saying, you know, overturn Senate bills seven sixty two and eighty. So beyond that, yeah.
Yes, and if we could respond to that now, that would be take one item off of our agenda down the road. I am not disposed to ask for repeal of those laws. They do an awful lot of other things, including funding a lot of wildfire mitigation. But I'd be interested in your perspectives.
Yeah, that's sort of my feeling about it, too, is taking away the map doesn't actually change any of the hazards or risks, but it does potentially create a pathway for funding to, you know, mitigate these hazards. So while I you know, sympathize with them or empathize with them, I'm not sure that that's the best, you know, route for Benton County to take at this time.
Well, hey, and this is the second round of the map and is this, are we on the risk map? Is that?
It's now called a hazard map, but it's the same thing. Yeah.
No, it's completely different.
It's the same function.
But you know, some people are objecting to being accurately categorized and I think that's that should be the goal to it is a map and to try to figure out where to put resources and and it. So I am definitely not interested in repealing the direction that we're headed.
Okay, I think that we can, I can answer that email message with clarity at this point. Yeah, the, go ahead, Commissioner Wise.
Sure. One other thing I'll note is that, you know, staff from OSU was there who worked on the the project, the calculations, the all of the projects. So when when people were, when commissioners were sharing their concerns, that gentleman, in my opinion, had, he explained and I would say addressed their concerns and why why it ended up the way it is. And it was his, his arguments were pretty convincing. I didn't actually go back and look at any of the data myself, but it did seem like he had good answers as to why things were the way they are.
Thank you. I think that the fear of insurance rate changes, you know, a huge component, of course, is behind this. And the this map is not to be used by insurance companies for insurance purposes, but I think that people need to know that insurance companies have much better data than is available for this kind of mapping. And so if anything, their maps are going to be higher resolution and more informed by data. So it's it's a tough time.
One thing I'll note about the the letter from Jackson County is they assert that there are some of the structures are incorrectly labeled and and there's misinformation on the map. I don't know if that's valid or not. If we did want to take some sort of like middle road, we could say, well, we don't want to repeal it, but we would encourage the state to verify that.
All of that is probably based on assessment maps from each county and assembling that kind of data is notoriously challenging for anyone. And as we know from other presentations about the county assistance financial agreements with respect to assessment, we don't have enough funds to update all of those maps on a regular basis before they're inaccurate. So I think that one will come back and bite us in the tail.
All right.
Although, you know, maybe we could get the state to help make ensure that the data is up to date, but again, that's where insurance companies probably have better data than counties do. The yeah, it's a challenging topic. I know that the other issue that's come up locally is the concern about, again, Coffin Butte landfill and the fact that it is it is in itself a fair risk. But it's not one of the risk attributes that was used for the risk that hazard mapping all across the state. It's kind of a little bit of an anomaly and therefore it's not listed as a hazard on this map. But I think we can just recognize here that it is a hazard, you know, for us, even if it's not on this particular hazard map.
Well, thank you for bringing that up because I do agree with you and it is is a small point of concern, or I shouldn't say small, it's a point of concern, but as you stated, I understand why it got left off, but we still acknowledge that we that it is a risk, a hazard.
And that we're aware of it. Yes. Okay, anything else on that topic? If not, we will move on then to the other item of new business, which is the Albany Area Chamber of Commerce Membership Renewal. And again, with my computer having gone down, I think it's a seven hundred and fifty dollar cost, Maura? Seven forty five. And we have been a member since twenty fifteen. So the question is with respect to renewal.
I support renewing.
I guess I wouldn't mind a short discussion of benefits.
Since North Albany is the second largest city in the area and the North Albany Chamber of Commerce represents all of Albany, I believe it's worthwhile to support the chamber and all of the networking functions and educational functions that they provide for the community. I don't always agree with their political stance. They're very much more active in terms of lobbying than the Corvallis Chamber is. However, I do believe that they provide a valuable function and that since North Albany is in Benton County that we should support them.
I agree with that. And if we have a seat at the table, you know, we can say, well, at least one of your members feels differently. So and if we're not members, then I think we lose that ability.
I would entertain a motion to renew our membership in the Albany Area Chamber of Commerce.
I'll move to renew Benton County's membership in the Albany area, Chamber of Commerce at a cost of seven hundred and forty five dollars. I assume that's per year.
Yes, and it's in the budget. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify with an I.
I.
I. Thank you. I would like to bring up one item under other. As we heard this morning from Stephanie Miller, they are hosting a benefit breakfast, their annual breakfast on October first, and she made a very soft pitch for event sponsorship. I would like to propose that we contribute two hundred and fifty dollars towards that breakfast in the form of event sponsorship.
Great idea.
Yeah, probably be amenable to that. Do we know what our budget is, looks like for those types of?
I know that it is, it fits within the budget. I checked with Maura. I don't know exactly where we are.
Okay. Well, it's a relatively small amount. So yeah, I I support that.
Would you make it a motion?
I move to approve sponsoring Cardva's breakfast on October first at a level of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an I.
I.
I. Thank you. Okay, is there any other business for the good of the order? Any announcements? The Corvallis remember what it stands for, the CARE event is occurring today down in the parking garage for the Corvallis Public Library, which is a kind of a fair for all of the resources available to folks that are unstably housed or homeless. So if you have a chance, hop on by.
You know how how late it goes?
I think it goes until three.
And I'm all in favor of that kind of one stop shopping. I think is a good, a good model that we should support.
Yeah, it's once a year and I I think that that's definitely the goal of the Community Services Consortium and Council of Governments in terms of co-location as well as to provide is to provide more of that one-stop type approach. But it's a good opportunity. And with that, meeting is adjourned at 12:05. Thank you very much.